Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education of July 9, 2015. Mrs. Bonfield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonfield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is audience communications. We have no members of our audience in attendance tonight. If you are viewing from home and you'd like to follow along on our agenda, it is a short agenda, but you're certainly welcome to do so. You would go to our website, which is livonypublicschools.org, hover over the School Board tab, and you can drop down to Agenda and see what our agenda is and follow along with us this evening. The purpose of our meeting tonight is to come to consensus and choose a search firm in order to assist the Board of Education in selecting a new superintendent. If you're watching this meeting, you're probably already aware that we've enjoyed 12 years with Dr. Randy Leif as our superintendent, and I believe, my personal opinion, that this district has been very blessed by having him as our leader for those years. At this point in time, the county is going to be so fortunate, as Livonia Public Schools have been. Dr. Leif has been chosen to be the new superintendent over Wayne Risa, which means he will be superintendent over the 33 districts in Wayne County. While it is an enormous loss to Livonia Public Schools, as he has some very large shoes to fill, it will be a benefit to students all across the county and, I believe, also across the state, as he's able to hopefully get some needed legislation in the education world passed in Lansing. And we look forward to the hope of that happening and benefiting Livonia in that way. This board did send out a request for proposal to seven firms. Six firms, six executive search firms had sent back a desire to present their proposal and be interviewed by this Board of Education. We took care of three of the interviews this past Monday night, July 6th. The other three we handled last night, Wednesday, July 8th. The purpose of tonight is to deliberate, to share ideas amongst the board members, and to come to conclusion on which of those six very capable firms we would like to hire. Mr. Winery, is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
No, thank you.
All righty. I don't see us on our monitors. I'm not sure if we're having any AV issues or if we are not, but if you might want to check on that.
I'll verify.
Okay, thank you. We did, I did ask that each board member come to our meeting tonight with at least having in their mind their top two candidates of search firms. For the benefit of the public, we have considered many, many items in relation to the search firm, including their cost, the amount of time that they would put into the search, the amount of time that they think it would take our district to go through the search process, their track record, their proven track record of having conducted similar searches, the caliber and resume of the individuals specifically assigned to our search. These are the types of things that we've been looking very closely at as we have been going through the proposals and listening to the interviews. And we've had some extensive question and answer session. Each interview has taken about an hour, so this board has taken this job very, very seriously. And what I've asked each person to do after all of this information over the last three days, to come to the table prepared to propose your top two firms, we will listen to one another, we will hear the strong points and see if we can come to consensus on this. I would like to remind everybody to be mindful to share their positive reasons why they do believe we should be seeking out a given search firm, as opposed to a negative reason why you threw one off of your top two list. These are all very, very capable, very professional firms. It's been a difficult decision among each one of us, I'm quite sure, as we've wrestled back and forth with all the pros and cons that each one brings to the table. But these very capable firms will go on to do work in our community, across our state, and across our country. So we need to be mindful to share our positive thoughts and speak in terms of why we do want to hire a given firm, as opposed to negative thoughts that might tarnish the reputation of these fine institutions that have come before us. What I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to share with the public what our process will be. We're going to go around the table and ask each board member to share who their top two firms, in their opinion, should be, and what their thought process is behind that, what strengths that each board member believes that that individual firm brings to the table. We are doing this so that we all understand each other's thought process, and deliberation does take place in public at the board table for a good reason, and that's so that all of us have the same information, and we can all share our thoughts and learn from one another. I don't know that, well, let me leave it at that. After we have gone around the table and had each person share their top two firms and their thoughts behind that, I'm going to open the floor in case there are any other comments that have not been made. Frequently after we've gone around the table in a very methodical manner, there are not other comments to be made, but if there are, we will certainly have time for that if folks would like. We will see where we stand at that point, and if we have come to consensus on a firm to put forth. And we will, then, if we do have a consensus, we will go forward with a motion at that time. If we do not yet have consensus, if one firm is not emerging for all of us, then we will go back and have further discussion on this until we do come to consensus, at which point I will ask for a motion, and we will go to a formal vote at that time. So, does anyone have any questions before we begin our process? All righty. All right, Mr. Johnson. I will start, I started with Mrs. Jarvis last time we went around a table for something, so I'm going to start with you this evening. Would you like to share with us your top two firms that you think we should most strongly consider, and any thoughts you might have associated with that?
Thank you, President Burton. Let me preface my comments by saying, I was impressed by all six firms. We received extensive material in their proposals before we ever began the interview process. They were all very comprehensive, they gave us the information that we were looking for, and I thought they were outstanding. On top of that, they all interviewed very, very well. I was, again, impressed by the presentation, the knowledge that these people have. It's their business, so they should have that knowledge. But I was impressed with their ability to express it and get it out to us in an understandable fashion. So I thought that was good. They, in my mind, they all presented similar information but with a little bit of a different twist. They all put their own spin on it. So it came down for me personally in terms of what I was looking for in terms of the search firm. And my criteria was more, I wanted somebody who knew Michigan, particularly southeast Michigan. I thought that was critical in my thinking. Obviously, we all want to look at the cost, we want to be thrifty, but we don't want, I'm a great believer in you get what you pay for. So although that was a criteria, it was not my overriding criteria. It was more, it's almost like I know it when I see it, regardless of what the information was. So, and I had a number of them when I went through my rubric that were very, very close, so it was very difficult. It would have been very easy if we had five firms that came in and were just horrible, and one was outstanding. It makes it very easy. This was a very, very difficult decision, because they were all so closely related in my mind. So my top two, and in no particular order, were MASB and MLI. I just felt, again, based on my personal criteria, that they have had more experience in the state of Michigan placing superintendents here. And to me, that was important. So those are the two that I had at the top of my list. And again, it was very, very close.
Thank you. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you, President Burton. I concur with Mark, and I'm not going to repeat his statements, we don't want to sound like a broken record, but everybody did an excellent job, and we're all very professional, and they all were very qualified to do our search, so. But anyway, going on that, my two top search firms, number one was Metro Bureau. I really, even though they appeared to be smaller in statute, but they've had longevity as far as being associated with Wayne State University, I really liked that. I really liked that they were a non-for-profit. I liked that they came across in such a manner that it was very important for them to make sure that we got the best superintendent possible for our district. And that came across to me very loud and very strong. And I think they, even though they are somewhat smaller in nature, but I thought they would do an excellent job for us. I really liked the fact that they were very concerned about getting community involvement and input in that. They came across very, to me anyway, very strong in that area. And, and just to, they just seemed to come across very strongly in their statement about making sure that we did get the best superintendent possible for our district, because not only, just it's the same with MASB, they have an association with Livonia Public Schools and many school districts in this community, and I just think they have a very strong presence of doing the job that we need them to. So, and the second one for me was Hazard, Young, and Attia. I felt they were very professional in their presentation. They, I liked the fact that they had the, they had the three locations throughout the United States, the East Coast, West Coast, and their main office in Illinois. I know they don't have presence here in Michigan, however, Dr. Morris was, lives here, so I thought he still had the tied, ties that we need to get a superintendent based on his experience and his knowledge of our state. You know, I think those were my strong points for both of those firms. I liked the idea of them having a strong presence nationally, because, you know, sometimes we need to think a little bit outside the box sometimes. I know it's comfortable to, you know, to stay here, but you never know what you might find in another location that would fit well with our school district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Laura.
Thank you, President Burton. Just summarizing what Mr. Johnson and Mrs. McDonald said, I don't think we would go wrong with any of one of the six. They all had a common thread, I think, as we listened to their interviews and their presentations, their common threads. They all said that they were going to customize the searches according to our school district's needs. They were very interested in surveying the stakeholders, they had almost identical, basically, selection process and so on. But with that being said, the two that I selected was my, I'm going to go backwards. My second one, in second place, and the envelope is, Hazard, Young, Attia, and Associates. And they prided themselves in being the largest firm in the United States, as Mrs. McDonald attested to, and that they were research-based, and I thought that was some of their strong qualities. But the firm that was just, to me, the step ahead any other firm is Michigan Leadership Institute. I thought they just fit our needs in our school district and would make a nice working combination with us. I thought they just fit our needs. I liked the fact, as Mr. Johnson said, that they were based in Michigan, and they have a really high success rate in their superintendent searches. The individuals that would be assigned to our district have excellent background and knowledge, experience, they're former superintendents in neighborhood districts, and they have a success rate that is phenomenal, and they have outstanding repu, reput, spit it out, reputations that they still maintain. I think they're able to reach a large number of applicants, and they even attested to the fact of being contacted already with people that were interested in the position. They give services, they provide professional services such as workshops, preparation for the superintendent, and on, and they had some what might be considered minor qualities that I thought were important, such as, they told the importance of site base, or the site visitations, which I think is extremely important. I liked the idea of the extended first-round interviews and giving that opportunity that they suggested. And I also, even though it's kind of trivial, I liked the idea of getting a list or the applicant's file for all the applicants, so that we know of everyone that applied. So those were my choices.
All righty. Thank you. Mrs. Bonfield.
Yes. Ditto on what everybody else says about being impressed with everybody. I know we're sounding, like Mrs. McDonald said, a broken record. And thank you to everyone for taking the time and effort. I know it was taking time away from your family and other obligations that you may have. My second choice firm was Metro Detroit Bureau. I think the part that really captured me with their presentation was the depth and breadth of their human resources background and the way that they applied it. They talked a lot about coaching the candidates, helping them to interview and be prepared to present the best, their best, put their best foot forward. I know it's hard, he talked about some of these superintendents may not have, or candidates may not have interviewed for, you know, 10 or 12 years, and it's a skill. And I just thought that their preparation with the candidates would provide a really great and in-depth look at each one of them. My first choice is the Michigan Leadership Institute, and I'm actually going to just try not to ramble on. Some of the high points for me is the, all about the leadership, governance, they conduct the research into art and science and leadership that benefit public governance teams, they train the people that we're looking for, they conduct the SOUPS Academy, they mentor school leaders as they confront a myriad of public, you know, school issues. They were very aggressive on providing multiple opportunities for stakeholders and making sure that all of the community was able to provide feedback to us at many different levels. I especially liked, it's, so it's designed to continue beyond the selection of the candidate to ensure success. So I think a lot of it is, is not just finding that superintendent that fits in with us, but getting us to be a cohesive team. And we talk about teamwork a lot, and at our MASB workshops, we talk about that, and every time you throw a new person into the mix, you're really a new team, and you need to work together to find out your strengths, strengthen weaknesses, your expectations. We all have different expectations and abilities, and if that's all out in the open in front, and we do those workshops, and we do the team building, you know, that goes a long way to making a cohesive group. And just my personal comment on, when MLI was done, I didn't feel so much like they were presenting a product to me. When he was done, I wanted to roll up my sleeves and get to work. I'm like, all right, let's go. And I think it was just, there was just that, emotionally, there was that feeling there that was like, we got a job to do, let's get it done, and let's go for it. And so when he was done, I was really excited about the whole process, so that's.
All righty. Thank you. Mr. Centers.
Yeah, thank you. The two different search firms that I picked out, the second one is School Exec Connect. And ultimately, what I liked about School Exec Connect, Dr. Colina came in and, very professional, been involved in local schools, Oakland County in particular, for a long time. I liked that they had done a lot of similar type searches in comparison to Livonia Public Schools, a lot of districts that are similar sized. I feel like they probably know the candidates pretty well, that, the types of candidates, and they know who's looking. When you look at a district like Livonia, they're probably pretty familiar with those people who might be candidates. However, there was one that I rated well above the others, and that was MLI. I was incredibly impressed. The detail of their presentation in every category, as far as the experience of the team, the process, the expertise, even reflecting on what Diane said earlier about the site visits, the detail in the site visits. You could just tell what a meticulous program we would run in order to find the right superintendent for us. The thoroughness was just incredibly impressive. The interview format was unlike what anyone else had mentioned. I thought it was very impressive. And your mentorship from one of the three individuals on the team, who are, quite frankly, three of the most well-known and respected educators in the state, well, that would be an enormous resource for our superintendent, hopefully something they would take them up on. So those things were just incredibly impressive to me, so I thought MLI is probably the top choice for me. So, again, very good search firms, everyone seemed like they had done outstanding things in their careers. It just blew me away, one after one. However, School Exec Connect and MLI would be my top choices.
Thank you. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. I know it's going to sound redundant, but firstly, I just want to thank all of the search firms who came and made presentations. I was very impressed, the presentations were professional, the information was intriguing and engaging, and I learned a lot. That being said, and at the risk of repeating what everyone's already said, when we did this process, we did have rubrics to follow that helped us keep track of different points that were considered to be the main elements that we were looking for in a search firm, points we had already discussed before we did any interviewing. And that really made it easy for me to record immediately after the interview what my gut feelings were. I didn't want to have to wait a couple days and try to remember who said what. So I made a point of just scoring rapidly my gut feeling, and then yesterday I tallied them all. And it was interesting to me, because when we had the proposals, I did the same thing. I went through the proposals carefully, highlighting important parts, being critical, with an open mind and with an idea towards learning. And there were two proposals that caught my eye and caught my mind. Interestingly enough, those two were the same two that scored highest on the tallies. Coincidence? I don't think so. The other interesting thing is that the two top-scoring ones were in fact a tie. They had different strengths. So now, if I've kept you waiting long enough.
Drumroll, please.
Drumroll, and in no particular order, my two tie scores were for the Michigan Leadership Institute and MASB. Now with the Michigan Leadership Institute, to my mind, they were the clear leader in the experience of the individuals assigned on the team to work with LPS. They had easily the most experienced, best-rounded, and well-spoken team that presented, and I also felt a sense of commitment to Livonia that I didn't sense with too many of the other presenters, a personal vested interest in our community, and an experience with our community, background with our district, that provides a unique strength to their team. For MASB, they were the clear leader in both the timeline and in the ability, again, to my mind, the ability to recruit candidates. They know not only our district and what our strengths and weaknesses are, but the kind of people that would complement and serve our community the best. So those strengths led them both to the highest score, and they each get my nod.
Thank you. I am the last to go. One firm that has not been spoken of yet, and it's interesting that we have, we're leaning in one direction, but our second votes are scattered all over the map. I will speak to BWP. One thing that impressed me very, very much with BWP was their very strong presence in successful searches in Indiana and Illinois. They are an exceptional firm in those states, and since that has not been brought out yet, I wanted to make sure that that was made public. Very nice presentation on part of BWP. The other firms I will not speak to because my colleagues already have. My choices for my first and second, my second choice would be School Exec Connect. For me, looking at all of these firms, I agree with what my colleagues have all said. I don't think a thing has been said tonight that I would disagree with. The process is very, very similar, they're all looking at getting a lot of community involvement, going through the same steps, and I truly do believe that any of these firms would serve us well. School Exec Connect, to me, rose to the top because a couple of things that I was looking at with a higher emphasis than some of the others were their ability to aggressively recruit the candidate that we want recruited, or candidates that we want recruited. I have no doubt, when this posting comes open, that we're going to have applicants, and one of the firms did differentiate between applicants and candidates. Some folks who are most qualified sometimes need a nudge to say, you know what, you better seriously look at that. I wanted a firm that has a proven track record of really being appropriately assertive. I wanted a firm that has a proven track record of really being appropriately assertive with their recruiting. And I felt that from School Exec Connect. The other thing that impressed me with School Exec Connect was their success, as Mr. Centers said, with districts that are of a similar makeup to Livonia Public Schools in recent years. Lot of these firms have done larger districts further in the past, but to me, I wanted someone who's done large southeast Michigan districts recently. And School Exec Connect, to me, was very strong in that area. Ranked even higher in my scoring, in my mind, was MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute. They were superb. As it has been said by somebody else at this table, you know it when you see it. For me, I had six excellent firms and one that just seemed to soar above. Some of the reasons of mine that Michigan Leadership Institute had it is they seem to have all of the pieces. All the firms that we looked at had strengths in different areas. Some of them were similar to one another. One might come over the other in any given area. MLI was the one that seemed to have the whole ball of wax for me. They have extensive, successful and recent searches in southeast Michigan, and that was key to me. I liked their timeline. I thought that they were going to be very assertive with getting this show on the road for us. I do not want to wait several months until we get a superintendent in place. I certainly don't want to wait looking at the portion of a year or a whole year or more. I think that that's lost time educationally and I don't want to do that. I feel a sense of urgency to get this superintendent search handled in an appropriate amount of time. I don't want to rush through it needlessly and skip important steps. But MLI presented what I thought was a realistic timeline. I really liked the idea of go aggressively at this in September and if we're not finding the pool of candidates that we want in September, back up and go aggressively at it again in December. I thought that was superb and I was glad that that did not seem to be a second thought. That seemed to be a very deliberate plan, that we can take these two timelines and if one doesn't work, go right straight into the other. One thing that I don't think has come out yet in our conversation is that one of the gentlemen on the team, Tim Quinn, worked heavily with this recent state superintendent search. To me, that says he knows which high-caliber superintendents or superintendent candidates in Michigan are somewhat interested in making a move right now, because that happened just a few months ago. That is an incredible base of knowledge that I think that we should tap into. If we have an opportunity to have that gentleman sit on our team and be an active part of our search, that's something that I am definitely interested in. I like the depths of site visits, as has been mentioned before. To me, every single one of these firms presented well and I believe we would be successful with any one of them. But far and away, I think MLI, in my opinion, was above the rest because they had every piece of the puzzle just clicking. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to see if anyone has other comments. We've each had some time to share our thoughts on our top two. Does anyone have anything else they would like to add at this time? No? At this point, we need to begin narrowing down. What I'm going to do is ask that each one of us go around the table and choose their one top firm. The goal at this point is to come to consensus. Hopefully, we will, from our first round, it looks like we have some emerging, have an emerging leader here, but I want to make sure that that is actually the case. I'm going to go around the table and we'll start with Mrs. Jarvis this time. If you have to bring this down to your one top firm, which would your, which way are you most comfortable with and we'll try to get to consensus from there?
Thank you, President Burton. If I had to choose one top firm right now, at this moment, it would be MLI.
Any other comments on it?
No.
Okay. Mr. Centers, what are your thoughts for a top firm?
Yeah, firstly, I wanted to say I thought everyone had really good rationale for the choices they made. So just hearing people's perspective on it, on whatever choices they made, I thought was very interesting. However, just hearing more people talk about MLI just solidified my thought that they're really the correct firm for us.
Thank you. Mrs. Bonnefield, what are your thoughts on a top firm?
My top pick would be MLI.
Any thoughts you'd like to share?
I think everybody highlighted, we can only highlight so many things I think we went through, but I guess it sums it up and, you know, they're the whole package. They were just really fit.
Okay, alrighty. Mrs. Laura?
MLI.
Any other thoughts on that? I just want to make sure, okay.
It's been stated.
Just want to make sure that I'm not going to run over someone. Mrs. McDonald?
My top pick was Metro Bureau.
Excuse me a second, I was writing something wrong. We're going to hold a moment, board members, because we are getting information that we may not be live on TV. And this is probably pretty important that we be live on.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to hold.
Thank you.
Are we ready? Mr. Winry, do you know at what point we were not live? How much we may need to repeat?
I do not know, but I will actually let you know quickly.
That's fine. We're going to go ahead and stay on the air. We just, we're notified that we have not been live. We're going to have someone, we're going to stay on the air. We are not going to go to recess, but we're going to have someone check and find out at which point we were not live, because this is pretty important that the public be able to see and hear this portion of our conversation. So if you'll just sit tight with us, you can watch seven people sit at a table for me.
It's riveting television.
It is, it's exciting.
It is.
I'm afraid that they're not going to see any difference.
Maybe.
It's always this exciting.
Mrs. Bonnefield, if you had a chance to fill in the blanks of the things that needed to be at least to the, what was present and not present and so forth?
Yeah. I can make it work.
President Burton, I do have one question. Once we come to consensus on a firm, I know we're all staying really positive with this whole method, which I'm very pleased because we need to be very professional on this. But if there's any points for any of us to make that we would particularly maybe would like to see going through this process, you know, because I have something that I would like to bring up, but I just want to.
Are you talking about bringing up? Well, finish your question.
Oh, no, no, no. I just, you know, I know we want to be very professional, very, you know, with this process. I just have a question or one of the points that I would like to bring up on my observation from yesterday. So, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
But I just don't want, you know.
We will have time to address whatever it is right now.
Okay.
Tonight, our focus is to figure this, but then, yes, we will get, we will.
Alright, awesome.
Alrighty.
We appear to have missed only several minutes. Difficult to say how much, but less than five.
Okay.
I might suggest that we just start this round of the number one choices, start from there.
Okay, alright.
Sounds like the plan.
Okay. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. You requested to know which of the firms that we interviewed would be our number one choice. And at this moment, again, for me, that would be MLI. To me, they fit us like a hand in a glove.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Centers?
Thank you. Again, just to reiterate, I believe that MLI is still the best choice for us in Livonia Public Schools.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I too would put MLI as my top choice.
Alright, thank you. Mrs. Laura?
I agree, MLI.
Okay. Mrs. McDonald?
Well, my top firm was Metro Bureau.
Okay.
My top firm likewise is MLI.
And as most of my colleagues, my top choice is MLI. I believe that they, my comments may have been cut off at the very end there because we had a lapse, I understand, in our broadcasting. I believe that the reason I would put MLI first is because I think that they have all of the positive attributes that we were looking for. Every one of these firms has a good number of them and MLI, I believe, has everything that we were looking for, all rolled into one. Deep knowledge of Livonia area specifically itself, deep knowledge of superintendents in Michigan. The Superintendent Academy is a big factor for me, but by far, what made them rise above everybody else was their appropriate level of assertive recruiting, because I believe this position will need to be recruited for, if we're going to have all of the, as large numbers as we can of very qualified candidates. And their track record for very recent proven successful searches in districts that are our size and our demographics and somewhat similar to our makeup. To me, they had all of those very strong factors in my mind and they seem to have the whole package. We seem to have consensus right now. We have six board members who are leaning toward one firm and that's MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute. What we'd like to do right now is ask for a motion. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield? Board members, your motion is attached behind your agenda if you need it.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approved the attached resolution appointing Michigan Leadership Institute as the executive search firm to assist the Board in hiring of a superintendent for the district.
Support. Thank you, Mrs. Laura. And for the benefit of the public, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you please read the resolution?
Yes, thank you, President Burton. Resolution, "At a special meeting of the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools, Wayne County, Michigan, the school district held at 15125 Farmington Road, Livonia, Michigan, 48154, on the ninth day of July 2015 at 6:00 PM local time. Members present President Burton, Mr. Centers, Mrs. Jarvis, Mr. Johnson, Mrs. Laura, Mrs. McDonald and Mrs. Bonnefield. Absent or none. The following preamble and resolution were offered by member Mrs. Bonnefield and supported by member Mrs. Laura. Whereas on June 24, 2015, the school district issued a request for proposal for executive search services to assist in hiring a superintendent, whereas the school district received proposals from six prospective executive search firms. Whereas after a thorough analysis of all proposals and prospective executive search firms, the Board of Education is desirous of entering into an agreement with Michigan Leadership Institute to act as the school district's executive search firm to assist in the hiring of a superintendent. Whereas the Board of Education is desirous of authorizing the district's administration to negotiate the terms and conditions of the contract with Michigan Leadership Institute on terms substantially similar to the terms and conditions contained in the R F P in the executive search firm's response to the R F P. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby appoints Michigan Leadership Institute to act as the school district's executive search firm to assist in the hiring of a superintendent. The district administration is hereby authorized to negotiate a contract with Michigan Leadership Institute on terms substantially similar to the terms and conditions contained in the R F P in the executive search firm's response to the R F P. The district administration is hereby authorized to execute the resulting contract with Michigan Leadership Institute as well as any and all documents necessary and incidental to said contract on behalf of the school district." And we will, the remaining portion of the resolution will record the yays, nays and abstentions. As Secretary, I will sign the document and there is, I hereby constitute its true and complete copy and those signatures will be provided as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from board members before we vote? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. President Burton. Just to let my fellow board members know that I, Michigan Leadership Institute was my third choice. As we stated before, all the firms I thought did an excellent, excellent job. I would like to see discussion about the timeframe and to make sure that we don't rush through the process, because for me, that was a concern, because it's such a very important thing for us to do, to make sure that we do this, which I know we're all taking this very seriously and this is something that we all completely understand how important this is. And I definitely would like to see, which I know we're going to get a lot of qualified candidates, I would like to see an individual that's already in place as a superintendent, but that's just my personal choice. And I think that was probably a concern for me when he said that he'd gotten calls from a lot of assistant superintendents already, which I know they're all eager and you never know who we'll find, because it could be an excellent assistant superintendent. But I personally just feel that we need someone that's highly qualified for this position.
And that's, both of those concerns are something that will be addressed in our first meeting with the firm. Whatever firm we would choose and tonight is going to be MLI.
Right, no, I understand.
Those are the types of things that the Board as a whole, we'll discuss it right from the very beginning, is a timeline, the appropriate parameters of this search and not only what the Board is looking for, but then as we've seen in every one of the proposals, what the community is looking for, what the staff is looking for and so forth. So each one of us, each one of us as board members and members of the community, members of our school district, will have opportunities to weigh in on the qualifications that they feel are most important in a superintendent. So we'll all have an opportunity to share those thoughts.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Burton.
Any other questions, Mr. Johnson?
Just a comment to that. Obviously, we don't want to limit ourselves and the only observation I'll make is that Dr. Leaba was not a sitting superintendent when he was hired and look what we got.
Very true, very true. Any other comments or questions on the acceptance of MLI as our search firm?
Yeah, I kind of, I know the timeline is maybe a little bit unrelated, but I think, you know, just in our discussions with MLI, I share concerns that Mrs. McDonald has. I think though that during the presentation, it came across that they are willing to extend this as long as we need if we're not comfortable. And that made me feel good because if we don't get the candidates we feel right away, I agree with Mrs. McDonald, we need to get it right. But I have confidence that they're going to work with us however long it takes. So I think this will be a good choice.
Sounds good. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I appreciate Mrs. McDonald's reminders that we need to keep our options open and not feel like we're locked into something. I didn't feel locked in with them, rather I felt like we had a Plan B already in place should we need it.
Yeah, good point. Mrs. Bonnefield?
And to go on with Mr. Centers, just to maybe reiterate is they're willing to work with us as long as it's needed to find it under the contract. There's no additional fees. We're not going to incur a lot of additional costs. They are sticking with us for the long haul with the fee that we have, that we will agree upon. So I just want to make sure that there's not any confusion that we're going to start extending the contract.
sure that there's not any confusion that we're going to start extending the cost of this.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. And one positive aspect, but too, is they said if we had any concerns, that they would work with us even after a year's period of time if something would arise. And that was a very, very positive thing for their presentation yesterday.
And I have to add, too, at this point, that every one of the firms did say that they would stick with us for as long as it took to get a candidate to our satisfaction. Not simply a number of candidates or what they think is appropriate, but they would stick with us until we were satisfied. So MLI was absolutely one of the six that said that. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. One of the thoughts I had during the presentation was the presentation of an expedited schedule did not seem to lessen their confidence in MLI's ability to bring us exactly the superintendent that will fit our needs, and that was very inspiring.
I agree with you. Any other comments before we vote on the acceptance of MLI as our executive search firm? All right. Mrs. Bonnefield, we have a motion for us by Mrs. Bonnefield, seconded by Mrs. Laura. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much to all the six search firms who put a very significant amount of time and effort into this process. Congratulations and welcome to Michigan Leadership Institute. We are thrilled to have you, and this board is very thrilled to be on to the next step of our process. I know it's an exciting time for our school district, and as we've said before, we'd like the public to know this is a task that the board takes very, very seriously. There are only a few very direct responsibilities of the Board of Education, and hiring the superintendent is one. If you have any comments or questions for board members at any time, by all means, please forward them on to us. And I feel like we are in absolutely very, very good hands with Michigan Leadership Institute leading our board through this for our district. Are there any other questions or comments this evening? All righty. We are at the end of our agenda. We are adjourned. Have a nice evening. Thank you.